The public hearing, first I'll introduce the members of the board. To my left is James Gray, one of the members. I'm Mark Begley, the chairman, Francis Dean, Ryan Hill, and James Channing. Their request for variance is so you need a supermajority in order to get the variance, which means four out of five, half the vote in favor of it, not just the majority. Because it's a variance and your very usual provisions of bylaw, they make it very tough to get. So you have to have four out of five. As a general rule, I would like people to, we'll call the proponents, the person who's seeking the variance to give the reasons why they think they're entitled to the variance. And then we'll ask anybody in favor of that petition to speak. Anybody who speaks, I'd ask that you give your name and address when you do speak. And you have your say. Then we'll allow anybody who's in opposition to speak. And then we'll give the petitioner a chance to rebut anything new that was brought up. If there's nothing new, then we won't have a rebuttal. But if there's new evidence brought up, we'll have a hearing on that. So the first matter tonight is case ZV 2018-02 with regard to Seventeen Angela Lane. I'd like the clerk, who's got the notice of the hearing, to read the notice, if we have it, open up the hearing.
So if you read the, from the agenda, that is the notice?
Okay.
That's the question in the paper.
If you want to read, Charles, you're the clerk.
All right, first case, request for variance by applicant under section 3.302 fences or walls be to allow the installation of a new fence at Seventeen Angela Lane, Sessors Parcel ID 89546, in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Chris Gonzalez, 157 Charter Oak Avenue, Hartford, Connecticut. Assume this was posted in the appropriate?
Yes.
And it was published as well?
It was advertised in the newspaper, general circulation.
We know the dates?
We have them.
Okay.
We have them.
But that's what it says, I'm just looking at the dates, that we actually, just so we have them on the record?
Yes.
I assume it was before the January 14 meeting?
It was December 29th and January 4th.
Okay. Okay. Is anybody here to speak for the petitioner?
Yeah. Chris Gonzalez. I represent CIL Realty of Massachusetts, who is the owner of the property. We are petitioning basically to try and put a six-foot fence along the property line or setback off of the property line. We don't really have any special reasons why, other than we are trying to just provide a little bit of privacy. This is, I don't know if you know, is a group home of Massachusetts, licensed group home. So they are staff 24/7, so there are shift changes that happen overnight. And the client that we're, you know, that is operating a home right now is, just likes to put up fences just because of lights and not to bother the neighbors. That's really the main reason that we're trying to do it.
Right. I guess, my biggest problem is with the issue of about a six-foot fence instead of a four-foot. I mean, we allow four-foot fences and walls in the front yard. And in looking at the petition, my concern is why a six-foot fence and not a four-foot fence and comply with the zoning? And give, it'll still give you screening at four feet.
Well, I think this, the four-
I mean, the backyard can have six feet, but it's that front yard area that you have. And, you know, you can have a four-foot wall or a fence.
And-
And you could have a six-foot if you want to do a, you know, open fence, you know, they call it, I forget how many square, but it's, if it's an open fence, you can have like a picket fence or a, you know, a chain link fence or a-
Prison fence.
Or whatever, I mean, they have different fences. Yeah, yeah. No, but I mean, you can have different fences that can be six feet in the front yard, but you gotta be able to see through them. Four feet if they're solid.
Do we know what kind of material this is? You haven't disclosed yet.
We haven't decided. It would be a wood fence, for sure. But one other question to the committee is-
No, no, a wall can be four feet.
Good. I thought the regulation was that at four feet in the front yard, it had to be 50%, you know, open.
No, I don't believe so, because a wall can be four feet. And walls aren't open.
No.
So you could put a four-foot wall up, and if you can put a four-foot wall-
But it's to the end of the, only to the end of the house.
House, right, yes.
The house line, only to the end of the house line.
So it's the area that, the front forward, I personally have no problem with a six-foot fence in your backyard, everybody has those, and that's not an issue. But it's that front forward section that, I mean, I know they like a fence, but we really need a hardship that really relates to the land.
Well, they park about six or eight cars.
And, yeah, but the lights aren't going to be over four feet.
No, but again, the regulation and the rule says it's one-quarter solid fence.
Right, well, they, that's, and I understand, they allow one-quarter solid fences, and they can be over four feet if they're one, if they're open, you can see through them. We have six-foot fences, and we have, you know, the metal, you know, fences that you have that are wide open, where you can see through them. You know, if you go like around the armory and things like that, do you see those big high, not picket fences, but they're the, the metal, you know-
Does it allow that? Because I thought, I read that, I think I've, I know-
Well, four-foot, four-foot fence, if it's solid.
Yeah.
Anything solid, because a wall is allowed if it's four feet or lower.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you've got a four-foot wall, you can put a four-foot fence.
So a four-foot solid fence in the front, beyond the front of the foundation to the, whatever the setback is, would be allowed?
Well, I think, I think you could put a wall there, four feet, up forward of that, but that would be-
I don't remember that from what I read, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to brush up on it from me, because I was so late.
Yeah, that, if we could do a four-foot fence, we would be perfectly fine.
Well, you wouldn't need a variance. I don't think you could do it, no. But you were proposing a six-foot fence, so that's the way.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if you can do a four-foot, the way you're talking from-
They step, they step them down, usually is what they do.
Yeah, step down, right. I think that to, but only to the front of the house is more understanding.
Right, right.
He wants to go down, you want to go down to the property line, right? You want to go to the setback, um-
They can go to the setback line on the street. We have fences in town that are, go right up to the street line, right to the sidewalk.
But I think the four-foot solid, I don't think the four-foot solid can go past the front of the house. Is that wrong?
Oh, yeah, no, it can.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we have, we allow front walls. And bushes. Solid bush, you know, like a solid fence made out of, you know, bushes, as long as they're four feet or less.
You'll go on. Front field's helping.
Well, then that, yeah, if we can build a solid, I mean, do a four-foot-
Well, you can only do a four-foot in anywhere in front. In the back, you can have a six-foot front, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, if you're-
Is that what you're reading over there?
I'm reading that, I thought, again, it would be one-quarter.
Would you be reading that aloud, just so that we can hear? I really appreciate it.
Sure, it says, no fence more than one-quarter solid or wall, greater than four feet in height, shall be erected closer to the front lot line than the setback of the primary building.
So it's anything greater than four feet?
Setback of the-
So once you're under four feet-
To the setback line.
Right, right. So you can go all the way up to the setback line?
All right.
From the setback line to the street line, that's all. But you can't have anything from the setback line to the street line, you can only, the height, the maximum height you can have is, if it's solid, it's four feet. Anything above four feet, then has to be open.
Right.
They're mostly worried about kids and stuff, you know, little trucks coming by, and you're backing out of your driveway, you can't see because you've got a solid fence, and that, we don't want that. Invisibility for cars and things when you come out of your driveway, so that's why that's there. So, I mean, if you want to withdraw your petition and, and change, you can do that without having to, because if we turn you down, you can't come back for two years.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would, if we can put a solid, four-foot high fence in the front yard, beyond, from the front of the foundation to the setback line.
I think if you check with the building inspector, you can do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we'll withdraw our petition.
Okay, so if it comes back, or the building inspector comes back and says, no, that's not-
Then we've already, I checked this with the building inspector, so I know what's going to be.
Oh, oh, I thought you said we have to check with them.
No, no, I mean, he has to check with, to make sure, I'm pretty sure that the building inspector's going to allow a four-foot fence.
Oh, okay.
You could build a four-foot wall if you wanted to.
You know, while we're on the fence issue, did the licensing for this facility come before the planning board?
Which facility? This?
This group home?
I don't know, we're not the planning board, so I can't tell you that, I'd have to check and see if they've gotten whatever licenses they need.
Right, I mean-
They're exempt under a number of provisions.
No, no, I understand that, but we're talking about the variance in the fence, I mean, you know, the issue should come up as to whether, you know, we have been totally out of the loop on, you know, what-
Yeah, what happened, there's a Dover amendment, chapter 48, section 3, that exempts these types of facilities from certain of the zoning requirements.
But it says it's licensed, operating under a license, but, you know, who-
Yeah, but that's the issue typically by the state.
Right.
And then the Dover amendment allows them to use the facility for-
Right, but we're assuming that that, this is operating under a-
So that's what he, they would have applied to the building inspector to get a certificative occupancy, to occupy their facility, and he would make the determination whether chapter 48, section 3 applies or doesn't.
The building inspector was up there in the infancy, because there were violations, you know, there were no permits.
Somebody was working on that house, and the building, they knew nothing about it.
Well, you can work and make repairs without knowing, but as soon as you go to use it as a group house, now, I don't know the work they were doing, cosmetic work, you don't need to pull a permit, but if you're changing structural elements or electric and plumbing, you need that.
Yeah, we're all on the assumption that this place is legally operating, and we have no information that was ever provided to the abutters, other than a year here for a fence.
Yeah, there would be a-
They definitely not the garage department, because I called, I spoke with the-
They should have gotten a demolition permit for that.
They didn't, they didn't even know anything. I called Connie and she didn't know anything about it.
I called Connie, the building inspector who was up in the-
And we're right across the street from you, they were not going to go through the garage for that.
The building, the building department shut them down within the first day, you know, because the work was being done. So, you know, there was a non-compliance issue, so how do we know if this is even in compliance? We have all these employees, they're operating-
Well, I mean, I, yeah, our board doesn't make that determination, but, you know, unless it's on an appeal from somebody.
Somebody, somebody should be relaying that information, there's got to be some oversight from the town here.
Well, the town finds out from people like you, because some people start doing stuff in their yards, don't tell anybody, and there's a lot of stuff that gets done without permits, and should have permits, and people find out when they go to buy or sell their house at the prior owner, never pulled permits to do some of the work they did, and they have trouble selling their house because they can't prove it, meets code.
Can I, can I just ask a question, and you may not be able to answer it, but we're not, I think, I think it's a good, it's a good service to be able to do that kind of thing for people in need, but the question I have is, is when certain things are arising, do we have the opportunity to contest certain facets of this? I know the Dover law, I did read it, I'm not-
Yeah, well, the Dover, what ends up happening is, there's a statute that says when they issue a building permit and/or a certificative occupancy, when there's an action by the building inspector, you can appeal that decision. That would then be appealed to this board, we then make a decision, and if you're not happy with it then, whether he was right or wrong, it then goes to court. You then appeal to court. But procedurally, it starts with, after the building inspector, you have a certain period of time, after the building inspector issues his, his or her permit or denial, to appeal that approval or denial.
But we didn't, if we didn't know about that-
Yeah, but a lot of them, that's the problem, the building permit, there's no publication. The only time you find out for the first time is when you look out and you start seeing either demolition or building, that's the first notice.
But we all, right from the infancy, nobody gave us that option, that that was available.
Yeah, we all caused-
No, I understand, but the permit, they, the law, that's a weakness in the law, is that they can issue a building permit, they don't give notice to the abutters, and there's no requirement in the law to do that. I know there's a petition that didn't pass the legislature to do exactly that, when a building permit is issued, to give notice to the neighbors, so that the neighbors have some idea of what's going on. In a lot of cases, it's, you know, you're doing interior work, you're redoing your bathroom, does your neighbor really need to know that, but, but you run into cases like this.
And I can't speak for you guys, but I did, I, I spoke with Connie, who's really helpful, and, but one of the things I did ask at the beginning, when I found out that you didn't know a lot about what was going on either, because the building inspector wasn't involved, and I knew, I was, I live across the street, so I could see him knocking through the garage and stuff, I'm like, what's going on? And so I did say, you know, is there something we can do here? And you did tell me about the law, and I'm like, okay, so is, can we take any action? Can we do anything? And you were like, no, it's all beyond all of us, it is what it is, kind of thing. So that was-
Yeah, I mean, you could appeal the building inspector's decision, saying, I don't think they meet the requirements of the Dover amendment, and they're not exempt, and then it would be a determination.
What's the, what's the window for that?
I forget, it's, it's either 10 or 20 days from the permit issue, 30 days for the permit, yeah.
I just have a quick question on the fence, I'm the direct neighbor next door, 15 Angela, and my question is, who measures out the property line? Because I have kind of an idea where the property ends.
Well, if that's a risk, somebody, they've got to put it on their own property, if they stick it over the line.
Right.
You know, we don't authorize them to go onto your property.
Right.
They've got to obviously build it on their own property, and if they don't, you know-
We have a survey, we have a survey.
Yeah, I have a kind of a general idea where it is.
Usually there's a surveyor that goes out there, finds the pins, and locates it, but-
And it's now six inches off the property line, so they-
Well, I think it's, I think there's like a big white stave in the back, like in the back by like the overgrown stuff, and I'm guessing it just goes straight down.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, but-
My concern is if they put the fence up and it's five, and they find out it's five feet on my property, and I-
Unfortunately, there's a lot of fence companies that tell people they do it, and they just stick them whatever, and they assume the property line is-
Right.
Perpeticulon or not, and then you end up with a fence that is over.
We have a survey that was completed, and then, before the fence goes in, the surveyor will go out and, you know, make sure it's not, not, someone's just pressing.
So, but that's, I mean, the statute, that's a state statute, and they were trying to revamp the whole zoning bylaws, and one of those things was exactly this, because you don't know until you get notice of it, you know, but you can then do, what a lot of people do is, when they don't know about it, they write a letter, ask for an enforcement action to the building inspector, and then that's an action they take, and you can appeal that action.
So the phone calls don't count as an action?
It's going to be a written action to-
I wish I had known that when I called in.
So, yeah, you, well, I, yeah, I mean, you don't, you don't know that, but I'm just saying, that's the other option you have, is do a written request for action to say, I think you've got to revoke that permit, because it's what they're doing as a legal.
But shouldn't you, but shouldn't you, you guys at the town, I'm not saying you specifically, but you at the town, like when I called, be able to say, look, you can take this action, you have so many days, but I don't, I don't know a lot about it, but when the building inspector pulls the permit, you can take-
Well, the courts have been tough on, because what's happened is, some people knew about permits, and waited until the guy was almost done, and then they filed the request, and the courts said, wait a second, you know, this is, this is, you knew about this well in advance, you could have done it. But sometimes, the guy gets the permit, doesn't start building for four or five months after he gets his permit, you lost your ability to appeal, because the time went by, so your first time finding out was when you see a bulldozer that are knocking the house down, and it's like, what's going on?
Right.
And that, sometimes that's how people can request, but courts have also seen people where people sit and they want to torture the guy, so they, you know, we had that happen in Westfield, where some guy put up a house, he had about three-quarters done, and he challenged the building inspector's decision that it was a previously existing building had been approved a lot, and it wasn't. But he made a mistake, and the board builder had the house, but this was just for a single family home, and they had to stop, and he had it like 80% done.
Does this decisions of the, the law he withdrew, it's not relative, but these, there's also in this subdivision, a acts of covenants, so generally, these proceedings-
Well, no, the private, the private restrictions are private restrictions, those are between all the people who moved into the, into the subdivision. I'm not sure the Dover law wipes out those private restrictions.
I don't think it addressed it, as far as I read.
But the restrictions typically have a 30-year period, too.
25.
25.
25 in this one, so.
It has expired, yeah.
So.
Yeah, you guys make sure you check that, I'm sure.
Who do we have to go for when we have complaints? About, like, the other day, one of the workers just drove right around a school bus when kids were getting out. They speed up and down the street.
Well, that would be a police matter to that extent, I mean, I mean, you know, you can talk to the selectmen, because they-
And then they got trash barrels, 656 trash barrels, they're on the middle of the road, and fouls, school bus can't turn around, the cars are parked there, and then-
The school buses can't turn around, and nothing?
There's inadequate parking on this, in this property, for the amount of workers that, there's seven to 10 cars there a day, and per shift. You know, nobody wants to hear the issues-
This is a small little cul-de-sac street, where kids play on it.
And these issues, you know, you bring up issues that, it's incumbent on us to, we're the taxpayer, this place is a nonprofit private, they're not even paying any taxes, we're carrying the street and subsidizing this town, and we have no say, it's just incredible.
Well, I mean, I don't like the state law, I mean, that's, you can call to your state legislators and say, hey-
Yeah, call my rep, you know what he said? Good luck.
I understand, no, but I am just saying-
But just we put one next to his house.
No, and I understand.
And see how quick he would have picked the phone up, Department of Mental Health, and said, it ain't happened, commissioner, we're buried.
Look, I don't have a problem, I'm just saying, that's the state law.
I understand.
And, and things happen under the state law, people make decisions. If you don't like that, you got somebody in there who's going to try to change it. Now, they, you know, the question is whether it's constitutional or not when they do.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry to interrupt. Just out of curiosity, and I don't know if this is the appropriate form, but what sort of facility is this? I mean, who-
It's a, it's a, I assume it's a, a private home, that they help people readjust to society and deal with society, I mean, they have them for all different, you have people who are mental illness, you have recovering drug addicts, recovering, you know, other addicts-
I spoke with one of the workers, he's a, he's a really nice guy, and he talked about the four residents, male residents, who are there currently, and just very, very high level, because obviously he can't share a lot, but I said, I said, I'd like to say hello to them and have an opportunity to, as a neighbor, you know, to, and he said, so he told me that I might not be able to do that with at least one of the residents because of, he is physically, he's a, they're all autistic, and he is very physical with his autism, so, you know, just generally, that, that gives you an idea of, you know, so they're trying to help people autistic be integrated into communities and such.
Yeah, I was just, you know, curious.
Into society, yeah, well, that's, they, it's part of the problem, they try to keep the integrity of those, those programs and the people that are part of them, because nobody wants them in the neighborhood. I mean, if you, if you didn't have the, that type of a law, chances, if it went up to the public, you'd probably not have any facilities, unless they're all stuck in where people have no influence, like in very poor communities, and that's what was happening, and the people are like, wait a second, you know, every other building here is, we've got, you know, it's unfair to our neighborhood that we have to live with it, so.
Well, I think I spoke with a lot of, a lot of people last time we were here, and I think we were more concerned about the, not necessarily the residents, because you're right, they need to be integrated into society besides the obvious places that they-
Well, they shut down all the mental health hospitals.
But the, but the, sometimes the workers, the workers and service establishment, following sort of, or being respectful of the neighborhood rules, like, for example, those trash barrels, there are four trash barrels, and that's, we're on the cul-de-sac the other side, and they are literally in the middle of the road when I come down, and they, they were there at one point for two solid feet. Again, just respecting the neighborhood.
Well, that's common, yeah, I mean, but those are complaints, yeah.
And we don't know who to go from here.
Well, that's a DPW issue, if somebody's not begging the police, yeah, but I mean, there's a-
Public, private.
But they, they're a state, there's a town bylaw that says you can't leave your trash out for, and barrels out, other than a certain amount of time.
So the issue I think is, we've got to figure out, are they going to withdraw?
Well, he's withdrawing, well, I think he said they're withdrawing, officially withdrawing. You're withdrawing your petition, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Well, we just have to accept the withdrawal, we have to vote accept the withdrawal. I'm just going to do, have someone make a motion to accept the withdrawal, because there's publication, and so we have to vote on it.
So I make a motion, by the board, to accept the withdrawal?
Excuse us, please.
I don't want to look at them every morning.
Excuse us, please.
I can give you the- I make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the petition for variance for the fence.
Without prejudice.
All, all in favor?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Could you request you put up a white vinyl, beautiful fence?
Well, I, I mean, I don't have any control of the style police. I want to open up the, call the second matter for the property at Chestnut Street. You just read the-
All right, we published in The Republican on December 29th of last year. East Alamo Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on January 14th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the East Alamo Public Library Conference Room, located at 60 Center Square, East Alamo, Massachusetts, to consider case ZV 2019-01, a request by applicant for variance under East Alamo zoning bylaw, table 31, Table of Dimensional Regulations for Relief from Side Yard Setback Requirements, from 20 feet to 14.56 feet to allow for the expansion of a garage area for the use of a handicap chair lift and service van at 116 Chestnut Street, Sessors Parcel ID 29920, in the Residential A zoning district. Applicant Gino DeSosere, 44, Bither, sorry, Bither Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. Information pertaining to the application is on file for public inspection at the Planning and Community Development Office, located at Town Hall, 60 Center Square, and is available for review for the public during regular business hours. There was no quorum at the January 14th meeting, so the zoning board appeals meeting was not opened. My understanding is that, notice was given at the, at the meeting, that this would be postponed to today's date.
So, is someone here to speak in favor? Yeah.
Gino DeCesar?
Yes.
Yes, it's, that's the situation, the diagnosis requires a ramp, which she's a single homeowner, will never be able to maintain it, it'd be right under the eaves, and she's alone once again, and condition is going to need somebody to maintain a ramp that she plans on working, and she's not giving up on nothing, which is great, and she's plans on relocating, but I said, let's at least try this, because she cannot take her neighbors with her. And you'll see a package of everybody in favor of her idea, because her neighbors are wonderful. And she, if she has to, she will, but she plans on working, it's not going to be a McMansion that everybody would be concerned about, it's going to stay in style. The yard still has access not to go on to the neighbor, if you should need anything in the back.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of getting a minivan in, and she can get back and forth wherever she's doing.
Yeah, and allows side access for lift on the, on the minivan, yeah.
Yep, yep. And it's a wheel lift, and it's only got to go up 18 inches, so it's a small unit, but unfortunately, she needs, she needs three days minimum, we're asking for five.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Any other questions, the board members?
Pretty self-explanatory, what he's trying to do.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. Anything more?
No, she's been a wonderful neighbor for years there.
Okay.
I'm speaking for her, I'm not related, I'm just, I thought this would be one great step, instead of trying to take her neighbors with her.
Yeah, so, it's a 6.44 variance, she is variance that she's asking for, so that's for, so that's what the, the thing is, I'm, do we, or, do I want a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Any second?
I assume that there's nobody here.
Is anybody else here? I assume, unless, okay. Don't see anybody else here.
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
All right, do we have a motion, the, one way or the other, to approve or deny the variance?
I think we should approve the variance, I think it's a detriment, you know, for them not to be able to get those, probably going to be good for them.
So, yeah, let me elaborate, I think it's, number one, I think there's a hardship based on where the garage currently is located, uh, in order to put a lift and have enough for, to accommodate that car, you need to expand on that side of the house, and I think a five foot versus the three foot required to give you a little room for people to maybe helping them, I think that's, that's what I'm saying, so I think it, I think that, that meets the, the hardship requirement between the structure and her physical handicap, uh, in terms, in terms of the public good, uh, I think we still meet the requirements, she still have fourteen plus feet to get around the house, um, the neighbors aren't opposed to it, it doesn't adversely affect the neighborhood in terms of appearance, uh, I've been by the house, and then I didn't see where that additional footage is going to harm anybody, and nobody's opposed, in fact, everybody wrote in favor, and so I don't see it derogating from the intent or purpose, and I think it's for the public good, it'll improve her house and allow her to stay in the house, and...
We'd love to.
And, you know, she may have to pay more taxes, because she's got a bigger garage now, but...
Yeah, she's willing to stay working, so that's, and, and, you know, relocating would just, it wouldn't help her physical state at all.
Right, so those are the, they, the grounds on which I would say we'd, we'd vote it for, so, then, want to do a roll call vote, Jim, we'll start with you.
I'll vote in favor.
I'll go favor, right.
You paved that three, so it's a five oh vote, so there's a twenty day appeal period, uh, to get the permit, um, so, once twenty days, she'll file, they'll file the decision with the town floor, that's when the twenty days starts to run. Okay?
Is that anything I have to do?
And after that, well, she's got to get a building permit, uh, but won't be able to get that, yeah, you'll get, you can get it after the twenty days.
Twenty day waiting period.
So I have fourteen days to draft the decision, it'll be a rotating, but then just for an overview to make sure it meets expectations.
Yep, I'll try to get it done as quickly as I can, so, because I don't want to hold it up.
She's doing very well, I mean...
Yeah, it's winter time, so it, it makes it a little tougher to build anyway, so it, I'll try to, if we have a big summer storm tomorrow, it'll probably be shelling up anyway, so...
Well, that's a contractor holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, that's, we got a calendar here from, uh, our congressman, so, the, the, we can hang it in the town, uh, office, I don't know if they need another calendar, does anybody need a calendar? Does the office need a calendar?
I thank you very much, I've got several.
What, you got several of these?
I do.
No, okay, it's awfully nice of our congressman. Our dates, but I don't know, is anyone who need a calendar? Do you mind if I take it, I guess?
You take it.
Do you want Frank, you, I don't know?
No, no, you take it.
I've got calendars up to the yin, so I, I don't know. So, and then we had a couple of matters, uh, for discussion, in terms of where we're doing our postings, um, and where the meetings are being held, so, usually it's done at Town Hall, this is not part of the Town Hall, so the, the posting has to be at the bulletin board, and I assume we're doing, we're also doing them online as well, uh, new technology, you know, not so new anymore, but...
We've been advertising in The Republican, we find that, uh, our deadlines are met readily and efficiently, so they...
They've gotten expensive, but, I mean, that's the hard part, but I, it's not like we have a lot of choices, because they bought the reminder.
Yes, sir, they did buy the reminder, and we are also going to be, um, publicizing on the website, uh, the name of the, right now it's under announcements, and it's going to be renamed, but the publication, the official posting site is going to be on the town website. It had been, uh, for a little while in the library, but we are making some changes to better disseminate information and get the word out, so stay tuned, uh, and if you ever want to seek out the posting, you can go to Mass Live, and you can Google it, and you can find it online, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and it's that, no, you don't need a subscription in order to access the classified ads. So that's, um, the news I have in regards to our postings, and our annual town report is...
I, I've submitted it.
Perfect, thank you very much.
They got it last week.
All right, okay, and I believe that's all, you have nothing, there, no cases have come in for March?
Nothing? We scared them off.
So you have a holiday?
We have minutes from August.
And you do have your minutes to approve from August thirteenth?
Okay, we better approve our minutes from August thirteenth. Does anybody want the motion to approve those minutes? I've read them, they were pretty accurate, I'll sign them.
Some moved.
Want to move, Charles, you can sign it, and...
Did I have a motion in the second?
Motion, yeah, we'll hold one second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so...
Those are the official minutes.
And this is Bethany Yeo.
Hi, Stephanie.
Bethany is our new, uh, Planning and Community Development Assistant.
Okay.
Catherine Boucher, whom you're meeting for the first time this evening, of many of you, uh, has been our interim assistant, uh, from November through today, today is her last day, and she was going to say hello and goodbye.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Bethany, would you like to tell us a little bit about your background, your education, and how you...
So I come from a bachelor's in psychology, and I just got my master's in community development and planning at Clark University.
So I'm still going to pit. Yes, I'm so excited to have another planning professional in the office, and Catherine has been so very well organized, and she came to us as an interim through, uh, staffing agency, and we were not able to hire her because we'd have to buy out her contract, and we have to be mindful of how we spend the taxpayers' dollar, um, but she's been